Welcome to the Millville Planning Board Meeting. It is Monday, April 26. It is 6:33. We have three Planning Board members here tonight. Justin Allen, Chris Drew, and myself. Bill Coop is not able to make it at this time. We are presently a four-member Planning Board, and so I'm going to put a plea out there. If anybody is watching and is in interest in joining our Planning Board, please reach out. We happily talk to you. Because this is the first meeting since the election, we should reorganize, but because Bill is not with us tonight, and because we forgot to put it on the agenda, we'll table that till next time. So Gabe, we make a note to add that to the next agenda. Speaking of agendas, I actually don't have ours in front of us right now, Gabe. So do you want to go through what you got?
Yeah, um, so basically, the two main things on the table for tonight, and one of them, I actually neglected to add to the agenda before it was posted, but I don't think it's out of order because it's just a preliminary discussion. We have Cassie from the retail marijuana dispensary at 18 Prospect Street. And she's looking to add some more to that development and wanted to get the board's input before she submitted a formal plan. And similarly, we have Chris McNamara from Harkness Road, who is looking to subdivide a parcel and has a preliminary plan, which I shared with the board. Beyond that, we have, we want, we were going to discuss the ongoing search for the shared planner. And then any board, board membership and meeting updates, though. We might just want to have a preliminary discussion before we maybe wait for Bill, before having, making any strong decisions on that. But all in all, a pretty, a pretty tight meeting today. I don't, I don't have any serious updates for the board. Nothing, nothing good coming in. So just these, these two
items.
These two properties, and then just some preliminary discussion.
All right, perfect. Well, I can see that Chris McNamara has joined us. So I'll kick it over to you, Chris, if you want to give the board a brief description of what you're looking to do. And are you, do you have plans to share with us? Or did you want us to pull up what you sent us?
I think I can share them. I'm gonna try right now. So can you all see that?
No.
That's not good. Hold on. How about now?
Yep.
Okay. So what we have here is in that yellow highlighted area, that's the property that I purchased from the town during the foreclosure auction. My house is actually adjacent to it right here in the left-hand side, left corner. That comes in from Dominic Street, which is the Fonzos Estates. So what we've done is we've taken these three lots up front, and we made them two. Let me share this next screen. I should, next one. I think it's over here. Okay, so what we've already done to date is this lot here on the left-hand side was purchased by Ellen Helen Senical about, I guess, a year and a half ago, and they had built the house here. This lot on the right-hand side has been recently purchased, and they'll be starting construction. What I'm looking to do is to just create a third lot behind here with a backlot with access to the front and leaving access over here for myself, because I'm gonna be putting a, you know, a barn in a small, basically a small farm garden area back here. So that would be, be an acre from here, it'd be three acres, it'd be a little over four acre lot, which I would retain. And this is a one-acre lot that I'd be selling up here. So we've taken the four lots that we bought and we resized them, I think, in a better way, instead of having three small lots up front. We now have two large lots, and then the third lot would be in the back here. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Yeah, does the board have any questions for Chris?
Is there any thought of doing kind of the same thing on the other side? So retaining the back piece for yourself, but, you know, basically mirroring what you're thinking of doing now with parcel D?
No, because I, I mean, I want to have enough acreage to put, you know, a pretty good-sized garden up there with a barn, just so I can store some, you know, ATVs and other stuff, you know, tractor and stuff. So that's kind of, I guess I like the acreage. You know, I grew up in Millville. I've been in Millville for 57 years, and that's kind of how Millville was. There was always a lot of small farms at the time, so I guess we're trying to bring, bring one back. You know, and it's going to, not going to be huge. It's going to be some, you know, some apple trees and all the stuff along the perimeters and stuff, so.
So just, just to clarify, so you would be, so you currently live on that lot on Dominic Street? And you're retaining ownership of, of the, of parcel B and then selling the other three parcels?
Yeah, the first, these first have already been sold.
Right.
And it's this one, I'm seeking permission to, to subdivide and sell. And then I would retain this area here.
Okay.
Actually, this comes out to the street here, so.
Right.
Yeah.
And so, Gabe, what are the, what are the steps in this process that, and because this isn't the formal request today?
It's not the formal request, and I mean, we, I think if the board has any changes they want to make, we can, you know, explore those before doing a formal application. I guess the main concern I have is, and this is, this is an existing issue for Millville, and it's something that, like, you know, I think the board would hope to see rectified, but it would involve a zoning change. We don't, I don't, I don't believe there are provisions for flag lots right now. And so the current, my impression is that the current frontage for these, for this, for these lots is not in line with the current zoning.
Yeah, that was going to be my question was, so I realize we're not doing it tonight, but if we, if we approve this and say, okay, you know, this lot looks fine, when someone comes along and buys this lot and they, let's, let's just say they're putting a single family as a right house, but they don't have the frontage, would they still need, would they have to come back to us with their application? Or as long as they build a house that's, you know, conforming to the rest of the zoning, they've kind of already gotten a, an approval or a waiver on the frontage, I guess, just more? How does that work? Like, are we potentially going to see this again when someone comes along, buys, buys the lot and is putting a single family on there? And everything else is, is as upright, with the exception of the frontage, where the frontage then gets flagged again with a new application for a building and not just simply subdividing it, or with this subdivision kind of already clear that up? So when someone comes and buys it, they don't have to come back to us? Because as long as everything else meets, that they've already gotten the approval on the frontage?
I'm not totally clear on that. I mean, I think, I think the board does have some leeway, but again, I think it might, we would probably require a waiver to, to approve this, and I don't know. Yeah, I don't, I don't, I'm not, I'm not, because, you know, I'm not totally sure what the precedent is for similar lots like this in Millville. I mean, the existing lot is a flag lot, so I think it would basically be like retaining the nature of it. And, you know, the, it looks like the existing frontage would be like 44 feet. So definitely not in line with the, with the dimensions.
Right.
I mean, we.
I mean, my personal, my personal opinion, and, you know, everybody's, is, I would hate, and it might be the process, like, I'd hate to see them, you know, Chris get approval for this, and then he sells the lot, and then someone comes along, buys it. Everything else is as of right, except for the frontage, and they kind of have to, like, come back to us again, like. You know, I would hope that if we approved the frontage, then going forward, if everything else meets it, that, you know, they wouldn't have to come back to us again, you know, unless there was underlying issues or whatever.
Right. I mean, Pam, are you familiar with, like, previous instances like this?
I'm not familiar with any other situations that look like this one. So to be able to kind of pull up precedent, I, I can't answer that. But perhaps we can check in with zoning or Lincoln to see if they know of anything?
I could probably help a little bit, because this lot right here to the right is the same backlot. You know, with, with street access, which is, see, I'll pull up the map here.
I could probably, I'm going to see about pulling up that lot on the property viewer and see if there's any.
There you go.
History on that.
So this is, can you see that? Okay, so this is their access to that lot here. Just actually pretty far away, but that's. I don't know if that helps, or.
Yeah, I mean, I guess the, the question, you know, is really like, when was this house built? But like, did they get, you know, the approval for this lot? And then they did a house, you know, a couple of years later, or six months later, after, you know, they already received the, assuming they received, you know, frontage, you know, approval prior to even starting an application for a building permit?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not exactly sure how Millville works. I know other towns. What they have done is you basically go into the variance, and the variance holds for a lot, because otherwise it's really not marketable. No one's going to buy a lot unless they put a housing. I mean, for me, the next step really is, I, I need to make sure, you know, the perk test is good. So I haven't, we haven't gone to that step yet, because I want to make sure the board's okay with the concept of creating a backlot. I mean, there's, if you go through the town, there's quite a few backlots in town. It's kind of needed, because we have a lot of, a lot of land that you really don't have access to, and it's not cost-effective to put a road in.
Right.
Right. Road runs $500 to $1,000 a linear foot. And if the lots are 200 feet back.
Yeah.
It's a big number for a road. So it makes it not buildable and really doesn't allow us to generate any kind of tax revenue from the backlots, if we have put a road in. So I think that's how it was viewed in the past.
Yeah, I, I'm hearing what Chris is saying, though, is that we want to figure out what the process is so that you, you go through it once and not having to deal with it twice. So I think, I think it's worth our effort to, to see how that was handled in the past and make sure that we address it in, at once.
I agree, because I wouldn't personally want to go forward if it's not going to be, you know, clear that this is what we're going to be doing. So that's kind of why I'm here tonight, is
Yeah, there's.
Always it, and gets, what do we have to do if it's another two, three weeks to figure out what we can or can't do and go from there?
Okay, yeah, we should, I'll, I can do, I can explore this and just, there should, I feel like there should be a way to hold over the variance to the next owner. Especially if, you know, if we can, we can hold, as long, as long as we can hold it over to the, the next property owner with an intention of building. I mean, if, if, if the board wants to issue a variance, and we don't want to go through the process again, I think that would be in everyone's interest. But I'll, I'll explore what the options are, and if we want to revisit this. And then.
Would the, would the Planning Board be the right body to grant the variance? Or would that be the zoning board?
I think we would also have to go through the zoning board, so. But my, my under, I do, I do feel like the zoning board has been kind of deferring to the Planning Board on some of these questions. But, I mean, Chris, have you talked to the zoning board about this?
No, I have not.
Okay.
Because I was in, I was in the same line of thought of you. I thought it went to the Planning Board for a preliminary, okay, then if we have to go to zoning at that point, but other towns, you go zoning first, but not clear how you do it in Millville.
Perhaps we could set something up where we did a meeting with zoning. I don't think they're, they're not meeting regularly, so maybe we can figure that out.
I think that would be a good idea, Mark, because this, this question about flag lots has come up in the past. And we haven't really had a clear answer on it. So I think meeting with them, short of, you know, devising new bylaws in the next month or whatever. I think meeting with them would be in order to kind of, if we can try to settle the question temporally, or at least be on, be on the same page about how to treat these. And maybe if we want to have some standards, or you know, see what, see what the examples are in Millville, so that we're, we're in line with the existing development and not, you know.
Put a process in place so it's easier for the next person who tries to do this.
Exactly.
Are there other questions that anyone has about this specific plan besides how do we actually go about approving this in the most effective way?
Um, yeah, Chris, just, just for our information, um, so because you're retaining one of the flag lots, are you, are you going to be building a driveway to, to have access from Harkness Street?
Yeah, that's my intent, because I really don't have the way my lot is set up. Back up here. There we go, okay. I have, I mean, it'd be tough for me to get to the left side, because I have a septic system over here. And then this is all state land on this side, so I have to get to here. And on the right side, I have an ingrown pool, which comes here. So my thought was to come down and come down this path to access from here. There's not going to be access to the whole lot.
Right.
It's just going to be when, when I put a barn in, getting stuff in now at the barn area. I just want to go along and go to septic and can't go through, through the pool.
For sure.
Chris, Justin, you guys have any other questions?
No, I think that, I think that does it.
All right, so, Gabe, you'll check in with zoning and set up the next, a next discussion when we have a little bit more information?
Yeah, I can, we can invite them to the next Planning Board meeting, if that, if that makes sense. And if we want, and Chris, I'll let you know. If we, I mean, I think it would probably make sense for you to be in attendance again. And I'll let you know when the meeting detail, what the meeting details are. I just, I don't know what zoning's availability is like, but I'll try to set that up. And, yeah, just, I'll, I'll also consult with my colleagues at CMR PC to see, you know, how towns without the bylaws have been dealing with this. Because, you know, this is probably a pretty common thing in the area. And I know Millville's kind of unique for not having the bylaw in place, unfortunately. But, you know, clearly, this is, this, this sort of development has existed in the past, so.
Exactly. All right, I think that makes the most sense. We can, we'll just reconvene. We'll talk about this at our next meeting, which should be two weeks from now.
Yep.
Yep.
I think, isn't that the night of the, um, the town meeting? I believe that's, I believe town meeting is on the 10th, I think.
Yeah, and I know that they were talking about moving the town meeting, but I haven't heard anything official about it being moved. It's a good point. Could we do another night that week if that, if we need to change it from the 10th?
I could probably, I could do the, I could do the Tuesday night at this point, the 11th.
That works for you, Justin?
No, second Tuesday of the month is, is no good for me.
Well, let's have Gabe get in touch with zoning, and perhaps we can figure out a date that works with, with all of us. And if it ends up being a little bit sooner, then, then that could work, too.
I'll, I'll send them an email tomorrow morning. And hopefully, we could get something scheduled next week or in two weeks.
Okay, thanks, Gabe.
Yep.
All right, Chris, we'll be in touch with you then as soon as possible.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Have a good night.
All right. Yeah, Chris, if you want to end screen sharing.
Yep.
All right. Should just be able to do it from the Zoom window. Or on, I believe if you also are on the window that you highlighted, it should be like at the top somewhere. We got it. Yeah, thank you.
Great. Cassie, are you with us?
I am. Can you guys hear me?
We can.
How's it going?
It's going well. Good to hear from you again.
Yeah, nice to hear from you guys, too. We're in the process. We have submitted our building permit. Our builders are saying that it should tentatively be done for October. So that's pretty exciting. But with that being said, we're kind of maxed out on space. So the idea has come around, and I wanted to talk to you guys about your thoughts on us placing an explosion-proof C1D1 storage container lab at the mouthful on the property. So they're fire-rated. They would have two hours of fire rating. They meet all code. I've already kind of talked to Lincoln a little bit provisionally of some of the things that he would want to see, like adding an extra door, making sure there are proper exits, just like there would be for fire code. But before I got too into it, I know the fire department had asked for the engineer's plans, but if it wasn't something that you guys were interested in, I didn't want to spend the money on the engineering plan, because they're pretty pricey.
Yeah, um, so I'm going to screen share to show the proposed site plan. And Cassie, just let me know if this is, I don't know if you can see it on your phone, but this should be the most recent site plan, but I may be mistaken. Okay, can people see that?
Yeah, so that is the most up-to-date site plan. So that is the plan that we had approved to keep the traffic off of the street on Prospect and kind of, you know, keep our, our traffic contained.
Right.
So in a perfect world, I would envision, so like a storage container, it's exactly the same dimensions of a standard storage container. So I believe that they're eight feet across, and they're about 20 feet long. So that's where Davis was hovering over. That's kind of exactly where I was envisioning them going. And in our world, we'd like to have two. One, that would be like a kitchen and processing and packaging area. And then one that would be for our extracts. And for extracts, we'd be using butane as a solvent. But it would be in a completely closed-loop system, so it's extremely safe. And we'd be trained on the equipment as it arrived, so that we would make sure that it was extremely safe with capable people handling it.
So you're talking about back here, um, so just like, to, to give the viewers a, a sense, how many, so how many, like, parking spaces do you think would be taken up by this?
So I would say that we would probably take them all. We wouldn't want, you know, necessarily people parking their car right next to it. I saw in Upbridge, Nature's Remedies has one of these units in the back of their parking lot. And they just have a chain-linked fence around it for security. We could do something far, far nicer and far more aesthetically pleasing. Because I do understand that a storage container is not what you were expecting, you want to put there. But we would make it beautiful.
And these would be permanent structures? They're not just there until the building is completed? Kind of, that's, that's what you're asking for?
They, they'd be considered like permanent structures. They'd have footing, a pad, and they'd be there, and that would be our extract lab permanently.
So the question before us tonight would be, would we entertain this? And if we did, would this be another modification to the site plan?
Exactly, to see how, like, if it would be of interest to you guys, then, yeah, I would go ahead and I would pay the fees, get the engineering plan so that everybody in all departments could see them. I just didn't want to go ahead and do that until you guys are like, you know, that might be something we'd like, or no.
Absolutely. Um, yeah, do any board members have any opinions on this?
I have a, I have a question. Was, was this what you're going to use the storage container for originally something that you had planned on doing within the building itself?
So, no. So we thought that we'd be able to have space for us to do solventless extractions within the building. And, you know, as we've kind of tweaked the inside, we really don't have the space to do, like, we would be using like our trimming processing room, and then like on the, you know, weekends, we'd be able to use it as an extract lab. So it's, we've always had the license. We could go and find an additional piece of property, put up a structure. There's just quite a bit of overhead and expense in something like that. Where if we put this on the same, on the same piece of property, we can use a lot of the surveillance system, like, and the server and that kind of stuff, that we'd be able to link all of that. So it does save me some additional capital. So this, it would be a far efficient way for me to do this, too.
So, um, real quick, I'm going to pull up a picture of one of these units, just to help contextualize this for, for the board members.
Oh, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Yeah, because I, I am concerned about the look and everything going, very curious.
Give me a sec, let me load this.
Well, don't be scared by the industrial look. Like I said, we can be creative inside it. We can, you know, put a nicer fence around it than a chain-linked fence. Our neighbors, I talked to them today, because we're putting our order in for our fence, and they're all very excited.
Okay, um, so let me just share. So do people see that? This is just the website. And so what we're talking about is what the extraction pod? Or the extraction room? Okay, pod?
Yeah, the exterior.
Okay, so this is the interior.
Exactly.
And you can see the dimensions are down here. So we're talking about the 20-foot pod.
Yeah, and we could put two side by side. Everything that we would do, it would be custom, so they'd be designing. So they'd be designing it specifically for us and what we would want, our needs. The area that we'd actually do, like see how it's partitioned off in the extraction room is actually pretty small because you don't need a ton of space for the extraction. But then like on the other side, we'd have like a small little kitchen area where we could make chocolates and edibles. Um, that would be built to, to coat as well. And then that specific area where the um, solvent extraction is happening is considered to be the C1D1 area.
And so that, that sort of gray siding we're looking at, the gray-black siding, that's like sort of the default that it would come as?
Right.
Okay.
I've seen a couple of them in like a camel brown color, um, but I mean, I'm sure that we could paint it any color we wanted to.
See if there's.
It, it actually looks nicer than I was imagining, I was imagining just one of those, you know, like steel, like, you know, trailer storage, you know, tractor-trailer.
They do have some, yeah, they have some that come on wheels. I just, I didn't think it was a good idea to have something that came on wheels that someone could come and hook up their truck to. But they make a lot of different um, different pods for different uses and it's really modular. So we can pick and choose what we need and what we want and have something really beautiful in here, like in the next like 12 weeks, it could be here.
I mean, would it make sense to have it closer to the building? Like even if you had to move the drive-through up, um, off a prospect a little bit, up more towards, oh, I don't mind doing that backwards. Um, so that it's like better connected to the building itself, or?
I'm gonna switch back to the site.
So I mean, in a perfect world, we'd put it on Prospect, uh, oh, so you guys haven't seen it, but we are putting a door on Prospect Street, um, and we're creating like um, an electrical closet on the inside. It's uh, on the left-hand side corner, like closest to Prospect, um, where you see the trees in the front. So like ideally, that would be an amazing place to put it because we have a door and it's coming out. But I don't, there's not enough frontage there to fit it, because if that's eight feet, I believe there's like 20 feet off of the building. So that would not work.
No, I guess I was thinking more, um, like where the drive-through area is, like you've got like an existing ramp or loading dock area. Like would it make more sense in that area, even if you had to kick the, the drive-through up a little bit? Maybe you'll lose a few of those parking spaces there, but you're losing parking spaces in the back anyways. Because it's not, because again, the drive-through is, is, it's not like a, it's not like a bank where you, well, the old style, it's like it, it goes through a tube or whatever, correct? So it's not, I, I guess my, my point is the connection to the building doesn't need to be, for the, for the drive-through doesn't need to be there. Like if there was a pod between the building and the drive-through, I guess, is where I'm going with it.
Oh, right, because we could just extend the tubes out a little bit. Yeah, I mean, that would, that would work for us. So yeah, we could just.
You would potentially lose. Yeah, you maybe only lose eight spots as opposed to, you know, that whole back row there.
Right, right.
So you're talking about putting it where, like on the diagram, we have these cars?
Yeah, where the cars are and then moving everything else up.
Yeah.
Again, I don't know what the other board members' feelings are, but you know, but like, I wonder, like for the neighborhood, would it make, again, for the operation of, of your establishment, but also the neighborhood, like if everything was a little more contained to the building and then it's just parking, you can do your proper screening and all that stuff and it doesn't, I don't want to say an "I" or anything, but it can kind of be better connected, which might work better for your establishment and, and transporting, whatever it is you gotta do.
And it al- also frankly, it might simplify the drive-through setup, because right, like, you know, obviously this makes sense, but you do kind of have two potential drive-through lanes where people might be like coming in from this, from this lane.
Right.
Coming from there, and if it's just one, so we're talking about like sort of moving this chunk up a spot.
Right.
Moving them here.
Okay.
That, that's interesting.
Yeah, I mean, I'll, um, I'll have our guys take some measurements and see if, if we could fit something like that there, because it would make sense. So then for safety purposes, we're not having to leave the building, cross the parking lot with like, you know, a big bag of trim to go get processed. Um, because I know that was going to be one thing that the Cannabis Control Commission is gonna ask me, how are you getting it from building A to building B, you know, safely?
That was gonna ask.
So I mean, it's, yeah, so it being closer would be way better. Yeah, I'll have our guys drop a revised site plan so that, you know, the next time we have the conversation, we can have a little, um, a little bit of a visual, but I didn't want them to start drawing things until we had this conversation.
I appreciate you coming to us, I think, I don't want to speak for all of us, but it sounds like we're certainly open to something. We have some concerns about the aesthetics and I definitely have some concerns about having, you know, your workers crossing parking lots with material. Um, so I'm, I'm with Chris on the fact that if it was more condensed, it's gonna make a little bit more sense to us.
I would, uh, I would agree with the rest of you and uh, I would definitely um, be interested in, in hearing this next piece.
Awesome, I will get our team drawing.
Perfect.
All right, thanks, Cassie.
Thank you guys for having me, talk to you guys soon.
All right. All right, um, other things that were on the agenda tonight, I think it was just an update on the shared planner, correct?
Yes.
Um, so I can give that, we did do a second round of interviews, I know Justin did some, I did some. We connected again with the um, the towns of Uxbridge and Mendon. And while we did see one person, um, that was, had a, would be amazing. He was far outside of any of our price zones in terms of salary requirements. Um, and some of the other folks that we saw did not meet the skill level that we were looking for. So in talking with Connor from CMRPC and the folks from Uxbridge and Mendon, we decided to repost the position in hopes of um, possibly putting it out there as slightly different anyway, to, to try to get more candidates to come in. And last I heard, we were not receiving candidates still, I don't know, Gabe, if you have any update on that?
I have, I haven't heard anything.
Yeah, I think we're, so we're, we're still at the drawing board anyway, waiting to hopefully find some candidates that um, meet our, what our needs are. I wish I had a better update.
Sorry, Pam.
Yeah.
No, no, I mean, I mean, it is what it is.
Yeah, I mean, you know, we, we've done with, um, you know, folks that weren't quite perfect in the past and it, it, it doesn't last. And, and so I'm, I am completely willing to kind of wait to, to try to find the right fit so that we're not having to be looking for a new planner all the time. Wish that, I wish that we had more, more candidates, so I don't know if you guys have any other ideas or thoughts on that, but that we're, we're not able to move forward just yet anyway.
Oh, well.
Yeah, we'll, we'll keep looking.
Um, so other than that, unless anyone has any more comments on that, I think the one thing, um, I guess regarding, so board membership and meetings, obviously Bill isn't here, um, but I, I was talking to Pam and I know, um, we were thinking of maybe if, would it, would it be, would it make sense for us to maybe try to find it? Because I know we had issues the past like couple months planning a new meeting. Um, and when we've had, sort of, we had some scheduling conflicts with the town, uh, we had trouble sort of finding a backup date. Are, are there any specific days of the week that we might want to look at for a new meeting time? Or just as like a default backup so that, you know, when we find out that there's a conflict, we aren't scrambling and putting off work for a couple more weeks? Because it, it, it has like put some, some, you know, application stuff kind of, i- it's frustrating for some of our applicants to not have, you know, things be clear.
Yeah, to not know when the next meeting date has been difficult, when, when it does come in on a week where we can't meet. And I know, I know that Bill's been having all kinds of um, things come up and it, it makes it difficult for him to, to join us. And I, I don't want to necessarily have this conversation without him, but I would like us to just think about, is there another day or time that could work? You know, do, if, if we met earlier or later, um, would that, could that potentially work? Or could, could we get creative somehow? I don't know what that is, is it much earlier? Is it a, a weekend day or something? Not that I want to be doing this on the weekend, but I do feel bad when we have applicants that are waiting on like small bits of information and it takes them five, six weeks to get in front of us because we're, we're struggling with scheduling. And I know we're also struggling with, with board members, so we're, we're coming up against, pretty soon we're gonna start having issues with, you know, folks that want to get a special permit through and we need to make sure we have a full board in order to pass one kind of thing.
Uh, if we're, if we're thinking outside the box, um, I, I don't know how anybody else feels about it. Um, but I, I'm all for, for doing meetings later at, at night. Um, I mean, I have, I run the, um, you know, I run the webcasting for my school districts, uh, school committee meetings uh, every second Tuesday of the month. So like that's the day that like I, I can't be available. Um, you know, my, my kids are getting back into uh, spring sports and, you know, they just have a couple of schedules. Um, and uh, and I, I would be open to holding, you know, uh, something later in the evening. Um, but I mean, that's just me.
Yeah, and real quick, just looking at the town calendar, it does look like a couple other committees and boards meet, you know, not, not drastically later, but you know, start times do matter and they do, like, the capital program meets at 7:00 PM, the finance committee meets at 7:30, um, and I, you know, I think that's sort of because they schedule around each other sometimes, but um, I, I don't think it's totally, it's not like it would be out of line with some of the other boards are doing. There, there's kind of a, from, from about 4:00 PM to the 8:00 PM, it looked like there's kind of a wide range where people are meeting. And I know in my experience, like, you know, some, some towns have their, I think 7:00 or 7:30 is probably the latest that most people would tolerate. But i- if it opens up other days of the week, so that we're not, so that we, because from my end, I have to get, you know, if I find out on, you know, the week before, I have to get the agenda in from Monday meeting to Thursday. Um, if I find out on Thursday that we can't meet on Monday, on Monday I can kind of figure it out so that I, if I get the agenda posted on Monday, we can do it on Thursday. And if we know that we have that time open, I feel a lot more comfortable sort of doing that. And like getting that in on Monday, uh, just in case there's like a mix-up. So, something to think about.
Well, I'll go.
Oh, yeah.
No, I'll, I'll go ahead and I'll, I'll, um, I'll pour over, uh, you know, you know, my personal calendar for the next two months and um, and see where, what are some, what are some options.
Yeah, I mean, unfortunately, my work right now, Monday nights are pretty much the only night that I have open currently. Um, you know, I could try to make something else work, but right now, I mean, um, you know, I, I was on the capital planning committee and unfortunately, work has just been too crazy and I, I couldn't do anymore, I, I missed a bunch of meetings and I, but you know, it's not bad of them either, like, you know, I, I can't be, can't be juggling and they can't be, is he on time, is he not on? It just, you know, so I re, you know, I had to resign from that one because it's just, you know.
Yeah, but I hear you, I, I think we're all kind of feeling that way lately too and, and trying to find the times that fit. And, you know, I, I think next month is a good example, if the town meeting ends up being on the 10th and we can't meet, does the, you know, the guy from Harkness need to wait another four weeks to meet with us? Uh, just trying to figure out something that, that works, that um, you know, isn't gonna delay the processes so much. But I, I do hear you, I don't have the most flexible schedule myself, but we'll, we'll try to figure something out. We can talk about this more when Bill joins us hopefully next time and Gabe in the meantime, if we can try to find a day with zoning to move that Harkness project forward, that would be helpful.
Yeah, I'll, I'll reach out, who would you say is the best contact on zoning?
I don't, I'm not sure anymore. Chris, you work with anyone on zoning at all when you were on capital planning?
No.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll send out some emails tomorrow morning and just uh, see if I can get an answer.
Okay, yeah, and even if we just have to limit the agenda to just get that in to, you know, just the one item or something and then we can try to keep it short.
Absolutely.
All right, does anybody have anything else? Oh, I had one thing, um, we have a, a form, I'm trying to find it. It's here someplace, we have a, a form we need to sign for the, the state, each of us on the, that is on the board still. And I, I want to figure out a way to get us all to sign it. Thoughts? I mean, I could like stick it in my mailbox and you could come by and sign it or you could drive to your house if you want.
If you want to bring it back to Town Hall, um, I mean, I'll be in on Thursday, so if, if people can come in Thursday morning and we can just.
Town Hall doesn't have the easiest hours to work around, that's my, my only concern.
Okay.
Can you sign it on our behalf, or does it have to be?
I think I can, I think I just need to get some information from you, so maybe we'll just text you and if you want to give me the information, then I, I can sign it.
Okay, perfect.
Um, the other thing, um, and I don't know if we missed the deadline for this, but um, I did, I, they did, uh, I was asked by Sheri to put together um, a uh, report for the town meeting. The main thing, were there any zoning changes passed before September, before I got in? That I would want, because otherwise I, I don't think I'll submit a report, or I'll just submit a bare-bones one, just explaining when the meetings are.
Yeah, we did not, we did not have anything at the last town meeting, well, we did, we had.
I think that was the one before, when we, it was like the signage bylaws and stuff like that, right?
Yeah, but it was park, we did parking, right? That was two, two years ago, this past year.
I don't remember there being anything at the one that was at the elementary school outside, I feel like it was the one before that, but when that was, I honestly don't remember.
I think, I think.
Road acceptance.
Yeah, well, it looks like they're mostly, they mostly just want to see if there are any zoning changes to be reported and it doesn't seem like there are any. So I'll just, I'll just send Sheri just explaining, though our meetings are in flux, but.
Yeah.
Uh, I can, I can put something together, I, I just have the, I ha- I can just pull the first chunk from the 2019 report that was just about the planning board, what it is.
Perfect, yeah, no, their deadline is coming, she told me earlier today, she asked me about another board and they're gonna press on Thursday or something, so we need to get it to her ASAP.
Okay, I'll send her, I'll send her that tomorrow, it'll take me 10 minutes.
Okay.
So um, tentatively, we're looking at May 10th, do, are we sure that the town meeting is gonna be postponed? We don't know at this point?
I don't, I don't know if, I think they were just looking at a different day to not hold it at night, I think. Wasn't it something like they were gonna try to do it at the school or something again, but I, I'm not sure.
Okay, well, um, well, I'll, I'll ta- I mean, I'll be in Town Hall this week, so I'll see if there's any update on that. But uh, otherwise barring a rescheduling of town meeting, do we want to plan for, you know, if we can hold, if we can't hold this meeting with zoning, are we gonna just do uh, the 24th of May?
Still have our meeting on the 10th unless the, if there is town meeting, then we would definitely hold it on the next, the next one, the 24th.
Okay.
To get the, at the least, we should just keep the dates, the second and fourth Mondays for now.
Okay, sounds good.
All right, perfect, does anyone have anything else?
Nope.
All right, a motion to close?
Make a motion to close.
I'll second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, you guys have a good night.
You too.
Okay, you too, good night, everyone.
Night.